It is 6:31 and we have a full slate of candidates, so we'll go ahead and get started. I just want to welcome everyone. My name is Lizzie Clennard. I'm the head of adult services here at the Elk Grove Village Public Library. Thank you for joining us tonight. I want to also thank the League of Women Voters for partnering with the library on this forum. My only role here is the Zoom technology, so they did all the hard work. Thank you for that. And finally, I want to thank the candidates, not only for participating in our forum, but for volunteering your time to make your community a better place. It's always inspiring to me to see that. The library is many things, but one of our most important roles is in connecting our community with information, and that includes election information. Every season, we're excited to help you prepare to vote. Whether that's accessing your sample ballot, candidate information, polling locations, or anything else you might need. This is my favorite season, and this is my favorite question to be asked, so I hope you win the library soon. That's it for me. I'm going to hand it over to Stacy.
Shannon, actually.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Welcome to the Candidate Forum, put on by the League of Women Voters of Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, and Buffalo Grove. My name is Shannon Silverman. I'm a resident of Arlington Heights, and I'm from the League of Women Voters of Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, and Buffalo Grove areas. Founded in 1920 as an outgrowth of the movement giving women the right to vote, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates or parties for any office. The League's purpose is simply to promote political responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens in government. Providing this forum allows citizens to become better informed about the issues facing their community and to become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. We are happy to provide this forum as a service for the community. We have some questions prepared, but we encourage the audience to ask questions that will be prioritized. To send in questions for the candidates, please text 847-701-4701 or email forum.lwvah@gmail.com. Again, text 847-701-4701 or email forum.lwvah@gmail.com. Please do send questions in. Good questions make all the difference in a forum. All of the candidates were contacted by email and phone prior to today. The candidates have agreed to abide by the ground rules provided by the League of Women Voters. They are as follows. Candidates have agreed to use a digital online randomizer to determine the rotational random order of speaking today. The moderator will rotate this order during the forum for questions. Each candidate will have two minutes for their introductions. Next, each candidate will have one minute to answer questions. At the end, each candidate will have a two-minute closing. League members will act as timers. Candidates will be given a 30-second and a 15-second warning. So we ask the candidates to quickly complete their thoughts before they see the stop card. Time limits will be enforced out of respect for all candidates. Questions will be provided by the audience. Please do send them in. Each question will be answered by all candidates, so please, audience, ask questions that pertain to all. Again, we only use questions which can be answered by all candidates and which pertain to the office being elected. Again, please send questions to 847-701-4701 or email forum.lwvah@gmail.com. Questions will be reviewed by League volunteers for clarity, appropriateness, and to avoid duplication. Candidates have been asked not to interrupt one another. The moderator will repeat a question if asked. The candidates are to speak to the audience. At this time, I'd like to introduce our fabulous moderator for today's event, Luz Nisi, a member of our Emerging Leaders Program.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. We are now going to start our candidate forum. We ask that you bear with us if there are any technological problems in the next hour that we're with you. With me on screen today, we have our candidates, our ASL interpreter Stacy Shine Stapleton, and our timer League Board Member Cindy Kemp. I would like to note that the Q&amp;A chat has been disabled for all attendees, so if you would like to submit a question for the candidates, please do text our number 847-701-4701 or email forum.lwvah@gmail.com. We're going to start tonight's forum with an opener from candidate Jack, candidate for the position of Board Member for School District 59. The candidates have agreed to abide by the rules set forth prior to this forum. They will each present a two-minute introductory statement. The order to start was randomly determined. The candidate who opens first will be the last to respond in closing. Then, questions obtained from the audience and vetted by our volunteers will be asked, and each candidate will have one minute to respond in alternating order. Each question will be answered by all candidates, so please only ask questions that pertain to everyone. Lastly, our closing statements will be two minutes. LWV members will keep time, and candidates, I will ask you to please adhere to the time limits. We'll share a reminder if that is necessary. When you see the stop sign on the timer, you may finish your sentence. All right, we'd like to start off with the opener from candidate Zach.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for attending tonight. My name's Sarah Zach. I am a resident of Elk Grove. I have been for almost seven years, and I live with my husband Chris and our two beautiful kids, Lincoln, who is four, and will be starting kindergarten in the district next year, and Nora, who is 10 months, and the cutest little 10-month-old that you will ever see. And a little bit about me, my life's mission is about helping people, especially kids. And I went to college to become a teacher, and I taught high school English for seven years in the public school system, and I absolutely loved my job. Even on days when it was really difficult, and there were days when it's really difficult, I absolutely loved it. I taught mostly juniors, and if the kids were college-bound, I could help them a lot. I trained them for ACT, for SAT, for AP exam for my advanced kids. I helped them write college entrance essays. I edited them. I sat on scholarship committees. I wrote more letters of recommendation than I could possibly ever tell you, and it was really wonderful, and it really truly fed my soul. It was a wonderful time in my life. About five years ago, my husband and I decided to start our own family. And when my son Lincoln was born, I made the decision to temporarily step back from the classroom and be home with my own kids when they were very little, and now I am their teacher. So, once a teacher, always a teacher. And I started paying attention to District 59 during this time, and I really saw space on the board for someone who knows education well and for someone who is, as of fall, going to be a current parent, because that is so important and makes this work so personal and makes me so passionate about this work. So, I view board service as just another way to help kids and to serve my community, and I hope that the voters remember that on April 4th or early voting on March 20th and keep Sarah Zach in mind. And I hope that I can serve you in this position.
Thank you. Next, we'll do candidate Samaji.
Good evening. Thank you, League of Women Voters, the library, and those watching for taking the time to learn about the upcoming election. Since 1967, I've lived in Elk Grove Village, have three children and three grandchildren, was a member of the District 59 Board of Education for many years, shared NSSEO and LICA, and was a director on the School Board State Association. Recent district events that caused division and unrest and lack of trust has inspired me to run again for the Board of Education. Even after four years off the board, I continue to be an advocate for all stakeholders, students, parents, staff, and community without personal agenda. And as a board member, will provide the necessary independent lay oversight on behalf of the entire community. My belief is that every child can learn, and it is the responsibility of the Board of Education to provide curricular programs and opportunities that challenge and inspire students. This is accomplished by ensuring that teachers are supported, well-prepared, and have the necessary resources to meet students' needs, so every child will grow and become a respected and productive participant in our society. Among the attributes that I bring to the board are experience, knowledge, leadership, personal integrity, commitment, impartiality, stability, independence, and a passion for the District 59 community. I can see two sides of an issue and balance all stakeholders' interests when making decisions while keeping in focus what is best for the District 59 students. Thank you again for your attention.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have candidate Patrielli speak.
Hi, my name's Patty Patrielli. I've been in the district for 35 years. I've taught in the district for 25. All of my children went through this district, and I've been on the board almost four years. It's my first term. I left teaching, which I miss and I love so much, to do what I thought was important, and that was to be on the board to start helping to bring the board back to what it was when my children went through. Curriculum was lacking. We had a superintendent who was not focused on what was best for the students and for the teachers, but more for, you know, what the next big idea was in education to push through to the teachers. There's still so much that needs to be done besides the trouble from the pandemic. Kids have fallen behind. They were behind before we got into the pandemic, and we need to bring them up to speed. I do not want to keep sending kids to the high school unprepared. That used to be my greatest thing that I loved to do was getting the eighth graders ready to tackle high school and beyond. And I just feel like there's so much that we need to do to help these kids and to make their environment safe and welcoming to them. There's a lot of issues that need to be dealt with. Curriculum needs to get out to them quicker. Teachers need the support. Trust needs to be there, which has been escaping us for so many years now. And you cannot have a successful district without trust and confidence in the people that are leading the district. So I'm hoping when April 4th turns around that I will get another chance to do more of the things that I really want to get done in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Chesney.
Thank you. First, I wanted to thank the Women Voters for organizing the forum, our moderator Luz for taking on the challenge, and most importantly, I want to thank all of the voters for taking the time, asking the questions, and watching the forum before the elections on April 4th and early voting, of course, March 20th. I'm running for the District 59 Board of Education because I believe that every child has an untapped potential, and it is up to the parents, teachers, and administration, of course, the board as well, to ensure that the children have the opportunity to realize their potential and to succeed in life. I'm not personally, I come from a family that is a migrant family. We came to the US over 30 years ago in hopes of a better life. And just like many students in our district, I know what it means to be trapped into a new environment, having to learn new language, needing that extra help and resources. Fortunately, I was lucky. I did get the support. I did get what I needed to finish my education. I got my MBA from University of Chicago, and now with over 15 years of experience in problem-solving and project management across multiple industries, I want to give back to the community. I want to help fix the core problems that our schools have been dealing with for many years now and ensuring that our students, teachers, and staff have the necessary tools, support, and resources needed to drive positive student outcomes, no matter where they come from, where they live, or which of our neighborhood community schools they attend. I have two kids, two wonderful kids, Caroline and Phillip. And having kids that are in school right now, I had the opportunity to experience firsthand how the decisions of the board impact the district and our communities. And it is due to that experience that I want to get involved and help our district refocus, focus on the core challenges, and to get back on track to providing great education and helping students learn.
Thank you. Candidate Johnson.
Hi, I'm PR Johnson. I just wanted to quickly thank the League of Women Voters. I know it's a volunteer organization. You're dedicating your time to this and also have many more than just this forum. So thank you for taking the time to organize this. I also want to thank the award-winning Elk Grove Library for organizing the virtual aspect of this, and then also everybody listening at home and taking their time out of their evening to listen to us. I'm running for the board because I want to make sure that our students have the resources that they need. The district has plenty of resources, and I think we can put those resources to much better use and get everything back on track. I was born in Elk Grove. I was raised in Elk Grove. I'm raising a family in Elk Grove now. I have three kids who will all be at Byrd by next fall. My wife is the PTO co-president at Byrd. She works in the school. I have two sisters that work in the school. So I realize the importance of education and the foundation that lays for not only our students, but the community. Because in Elk Grove Village, especially in the surrounding communities that the district serves, a lot of people end up back in the community and decide to raise their children there, and the school district is a big part of that. So I know what our communities are capable of. I know the potential of the district, and I'm here to get us back to, you know, the district that I attended when I was growing up. I spent eight years on the Elk Grove Village Library Board of Trustees. I spent two terms as president, and in that time, we made a lot of progress. I will only take, you know, a little bit of credit because it's the people like Lizzie and the staff at the library who really put in the time and the effort to make it what it is, but it is an award-winning library, and I think we've done a lot of great things over the last eight years. It's easy to say what you want to do, but it's a different thing to get done what you say you're going to do, and that's what I would like to bring to the District 59 Board.
Thank you. Candidate Kelly.
Hi, thank you, Women League of Voters, and thank you for everyone that's here listening tonight. A little bit about myself is I just recently retired from District 59 on August 1st of this year. I have been in District 59 since 1969, and I attended Elk Grove High School. While my kids were in school, I was a lunch supervisor, and then that turned into me doing some part-time work at Grove Junior High in their office as a secretary and went back to Ruplee to do some more secretarial work over there, which then turned into a full-time position at John J. School in Mount Prospect, which I held that office manager position for 10 years. At the end of that 10 years, I was asked to go over to Claremont for their need, and I spent my last five years over at Claremont before I retired, but before I officially retired. I wanted to help out my friends at Ridge School because their office manager was on maternity leave, so I spent four weeks over there getting them set up and getting them ready for the school year. I've been a Girl Scout leader, co-service unit manager for Girl Scouts here in Elk Grove Village. I am a member of the IEA NEA, and I held the position of Vice President in charge of ESPs for 12 years, and I helped negotiate for contracts for the ESPs. And the reason I want to run is because I need to find the purpose for our staff and students to be safe and feel secure, once again, in their learning, in everything that they do, and we need to get our communication between the admin and the staff back together and find respect for our staff. Respect went out the door, and I don't know why. So that's why I want to run for District 59 Board.
Thank you, candidates. We're now going to move into the question and answer portion of tonight's forum. I'm going to read the first question that we have prepared. We're going to start with candidate Samaji for this portion, and then we're going to rotate in that random order. And to all of the people listening tonight, if you would like to submit a question at any time during tonight's forum, you are welcome to send that question to 847-701-4701 in a text, or you can email forum.lwvah@gmail.com. We'll be checking that for new questions, which will be our priority to answer. So the first question tonight is, "The current board rejected the school pairings proposal..." Sorry, "rejected the school pairings proposal recently recommended by the Equity Study. If you are elected, name the most important step you would suggest the district take to address drops in enrollment and poor academic achievement." Candidate Samaji.
Equity journey. While it is a compelling tagline, it was indeed a crash-and-burn journey. Parents with more than one child know that it is impossible to totally be fair and treat a child exactly the same, and it is hard to be equitable. One child always identifies a parenting inequity. Same-ness can only create diminishing expectations. It is more important to give your child what they need when they need it. I do not know what was directed by the Board of Education on their journey, but in their new journey going forward, I would suggest that all information that was gathered within equities identified be studied in open communication, and those being affected. In short, giving the next journey adequate time, dialogue, debate, and finally, coming to agreement as to how to address those perceived inequities.
Thank you. Candidate Patrielli.
I think the biggest part I take from the question is not just the journey itself, but also how to make the environment safe. I know the districts around us have been proactive as far as getting student resource officers, getting behavior interventionists in place to help these kids be able to adjust to being back in the classroom. I think getting our curriculum to our students and our teachers faster would help a great deal to help get these kids into a more regular routine to help them on their path moving forward. Those two things are huge in my book. Teachers need to be able to trust that those things are there for them, that their environment is safe for them and their students, and I think those are two steps that I would think would be number one to try and get going.
Thank you. Candidate Chesney.
Thank you so much. A great question. Student parents definitely have been a big topic lately, topic lately. One that is very close to our hearts, and I mean our, because we have running as a great team together with DR and with Sarah. And we are the ones who have been fighting tooth and nail to stop the very chaotic approach by the current administration and the board and the board to basically equalize everything and potentially ruin our district and ruin our community schools. There are better ways to fight for equity. It is to invest in our students. And the way I would want us to do it is like first, making sure that we prioritize the student outcomes by expediting the curriculum. They have been investing in curriculum for the past five years and more. And why aren't we expediting it? I don't know. But most importantly, second, is to make sure that we have very safe and secure schools where students are not afraid to go in and study.
Thank you. Candidate Johnson.
Yeah, I think the most important things are curriculum, like a few of the other candidates mentioned, safety that the other candidates have mentioned so far. And then the third one, which I'll touch on now, is stability. There's been so much instability heading into the pandemic, heading out of the pandemic. Some of the kids who are in school now would have been the most affected by the equity journey and the grade-level pairings would have been the children going into, into third grade. They would have not had a normal year or a consistent year. So I think stability is going to be key, stability with the board, stability with the leadership team, stability in the school, and just making kids feel safe, making teachers feel like they have the support they need to get this curriculum implemented, and then continue down that path and just make sure that for once in the last three, four years, that they finally have a stable environment to learn and teach in.
Thank you. Candidate Kelly.
I agree with Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Patrielli. We need to make sure that our schools are safe and have this feeling of warmth for the kids that they want to come into school. And yet, when they want to come into school, they're going to want to learn because their teachers are going to have the curriculum that they need. They have a curriculum. We need to fix what they have. We need to get all of our teachers, the components that they need for all of this, and not just, well, we'll get it down the road, or we're working on it, or asking the teachers to do what they can to find it. We, as a district, need to give them that information so that they can teach our kids, and we can get a safe environment for our kids and set their boundaries so that they know what their expectations are.
Thank you. Candidate Zach.
I think the best thing that came out of our school pairing plan and our equity journey this year is that now we have raw data. We know who needs help. We need how to help them, and we need to staff now, not next year. Now. Kids need academic interventions. They need them now. According to the winter benchmark data, 32% of our kids are behind in reading a grade level. 15% are three or more grade levels behind. In a district of 6,000 kids, that is an incredible number of kids, and I don't use incredible in a good way here. That is too many kids who are behind three or more grade levels. We need to get academic interventionists in there now to help those kids. MTSS is a broken way to address which kids need academic interventions. We need a new district-wide metric that is going to get kids interventions when they need them, where they need them, regardless of who they are or how they score. They need to be helped, and we need to get it to them now.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the second question, and starting with candidate Patrielli. "The district cites fiscal responsibility and stewardship of resources as a strength. Do you agree? Why or why not?"
We do have the resources. We're not a poor district. And to me, if we have it, we should use it where it's going to do the most good, and that's for the kids and the teachers to get the resources that they need. It's not there to sit in a bank and say, "Look how much money we have." It's there to be used for the things that are going to help our district grow and become what it used to be. I mean, I'm sure, TR, you remember what the district used to be. You came up through this district. Rose, you remember what this district... Barb, you remember as well. I mean, this district used to be the one that was the most sought after. We had no trouble getting people to teach in the classroom. We had no trouble telling families, "This was a good place to raise your kids." But now, it's like Sarah said, we're broken. We need to fix it.
Thank you. Candidate Chesney.
Great question again, and for that, I can only say that I do not believe that we have a good stewardship of resources. We have over $90 million in our savings accounts and bonds, and we had our existing board clap and be happy about $1 million that came in as a return on investment. That is significantly less than our inflation. And honestly, when I heard that, for me, my only thing that I could hear of is, "Don't invest in bonds. Invest in children." That is where the most important return on investment is going to be. So I do not know why we keep hearing that from existing board that we are doing great, but we need to invest. We should use it towards the children, when nothing happened so far. We had that money in a bank for a while. Why wasn't it used now? I don't know, but that's something that I want to change. I want to make sure that we hire more interventionists, more support, and make sure that the kids have what they need to study and to learn.
Thank you. Candidate Johnson.
I think the board has been fiscally responsible, as evidenced by the amount of money that in resources they have in the bank, but I don't think they've been good at the stewardship of those resources. So spending all that time and money and energy, and it's not just monetary resources. It's the limited staff that is, they keep claiming it's hard to hire staff. So spending limited staff time on the equity journey that they called it was not a good stewardship of those resources. So the resources are there. We just need to direct them to the appropriate places. And as Sarah was saying, we need to put that money to use now, because as Lucas pointed out, it does no good sitting in a bank account. Now, we have to make sure that we have an eye on the future, and we always have that luxury of having those extra resources so we can make changes and adapt and do what we need to do. But we need to be much better at where we direct those resources.
Thank you. Candidate Kelly.
Yes, as an office manager, I was a budget manager. And I know that the past three superintendents of finance disliked every time I would open my mouth with something that was coming in new, because my first question was, "What are the taxpayers going to say? I paid my taxes, which paid my salary, which paid for the building, which paid for everything else. That money was not mine to spend. It was the taxpayers' money to spend." And I think somewhere down the road, that needs to be brought back. And I think if we get respect back in our district, we will then be able to hire the qualified teachers and staff that we want, like we used to, as you said, Patty. But as you said, Patty, because it used to be people were fighting to get into our district. And now it's like we're trying to grab whatever, and I don't want to say this because I love all my staff, but we're not getting the top of every class that we want. We're getting a little bit lower and we're not going to do that. We are a top act.
Thank you. Candidate Zach.
Fiscal responsibility is very important and it's among the top priorities, being a board member, is spending money well. The last I heard, we had $87 million in unreserved funds. And I will also say that hiring a good teacher is never a waste of money. So we need to get the staff in place and the staff supported so that the kids can get up to grade level, as many of them as humanly possible. I just heard from a teacher today that there were no subs in her building and she had to teach her class and the class next door, which is unacceptable. We need the support staff. I'm tired of hearing excuses about why we can't hire staff and why we can't retain staff. Recruit, 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 recruit and pay the people and you will get people in there to help kids. So hiring good staff is never a waste of money and that's how you're fiscally responsible.
Thank you. Candidate Samaji.
I was on the board when I first came on the board. The board was, the district was bankrupt and paid in script. And in order to alleviate that, we built up the reserves, which is good. But in order to free up some money, board policy can lower what we have in reserves to free up some money to give them in the areas that we need, which is student services. I was at a meeting and I heard the superintendent say something about we can't give interventions to all of our students that need it because there isn't enough money. I think we can free up, I think the district can free up some money to do the important things to make sure that every student gets what they need.
Thank you. We're going to look at our next question, which candidate Chesney will start by answering. This is the question. It can be difficult to know the true pulse of the community when only some views are coming forward, often loudly. What are your thoughts on creating a demographically representative panel of School District 59 residents and students who would learn about issues and provide an informed opinion to the board?
Thank you. I think the panel is a great idea, but it's only one of the, one of few ideas that we should be implementing. Having the representation of all of our community is great and having people from each area of our community that should happen, that should have been already happening, whether it is structured or unstructured. And what I mean by it is we can find, we can find many different tools to get the feedback, to get the two-way communication, the collaboration between the community, parents, teachers, administration, Board of Education. I mean, just by looking at other examples of what other organizations are doing, we can do a town hall, town hall meetings, coffee chats or group meetings where we can debate different issues. This is something that has been severely lacking in our district for the past 10 years, maybe even more. Actually, we have been going against any sort of collaboration and communication. And that's something that is, that we want to change as a theme to bring it back and help the community be heard.
Thank you. Candidate Johnson.
I agree with everything that Lucas just said, so I won't, I won't repeat that. But I also think that I was listening to this exact forum four years ago and everybody said that they wanted to improve the communication with the community. And when I go to board meetings and I see that there, the public dialogue is silenced and the public dialogue is not two-way and there's no, there's no opportunity for the community to discuss things with the, with the board. Teachers are afraid to speak up because of retribution. I just think it goes back to creating a better culture in the district. And part of that culture is opening up two-way lines of communication because that's what we're elected for. We're elected to represent the community. So we need to make sure that we're listening to the community, whether it's formal sessions or whether it's just informal, making ourselves available when people have concerns that they want to raise.
Thank you. Candidate Kelly.
I totally agree with TR and with Lucas. There needs to be a district talk about per se between families, staff, the admin and superintendent, not on a district Board of Education night, another night when we can just open up and have everything put down. I also think that we need to be hearing and listening to our fifth through eighth graders on what's going on there. They can give us the pulse of everything that we don't see all the time and bring that, you know, kids are going home to their parents telling them, well, they can only tell the admin about it. And it's a second story. Let's get the kids involved with this too.
Thank you. We have had a request from an audience member to share the question number again, so I'm going to share that really fast. The number to text is eight four seven seven zero one four seven zero one. And our email is forum.lwvaah@gmail.com. Next candidate Zach.
You need to listen, listen, listen. And I think that you need to be not only a face in the community, but a friendly face in the community that people feel like they can tell you things, they can tell you their concerns. And you are going to hear that and really, really take that in. I know that there are a couple of board members that do school business. I think that's awesome. I think that's a wonderful way to get in the community. They go to school events. That's to show your face in the community and just make it clear to people that you are there to listen and you are their representative, no matter who they are or where their kids go to school. I think we can do a really quick, easy change too of board level committees such as curriculum, such as safety. Those can be held at a later time, not at 3:30 PM or four, where no working parent can show up to those board level committees. So if we make those six thirty, seven o'clock, you might get a different few voices who show up to those. So that's a really, really easy thing that we can do to get more voices heard.
Thank you. Candidate Samaji.
Trust, the trust has to be rebuilt again between the school district and the community and the staff and parents and residents. The thing is, years ago, we had what was called Community Council and that was a place where people could come and get answers questioned and have presentations given to them. However, you know, that's in the past, but I think there are ways to do it for the future. Zoom meetings, you know, I don't know what, what, what formats, but they have to be out there. Those connections have to be made and that trust has to be rebuilt. And it's going to be a slow process. It's not going to be something that's, that's going to happen overnight. But with little, with, with steps, it has to be, it has to be done, that rebuilding the trust.
Thank you. Candidate Patrielli.
I think I agree with Barbara, but with Rose about having the kids get involved because their voices do count. In fact, my eighth graders used to be very vocal about how they felt about things. They used to love to be a part of the decision-making process. I also think that one of the blessings of COVID, if you can have one, is the fact that Zoom meetings have been made such a commonplace type of communication. I mean, I've seen meetings being held with staff, you know, 200, 300 staff members and they can all have their voice heard. So I think if we can do something like that, that parents can, can you know, jump on and be able to hear, be able to communicate, that's another good thing. And I also think good old fashioned phone calls. Let's get some phone calls out to the community and we can rotate quarterly if we have to, what kind of questions or what kind of communication we want to have so that we can have a more well-rounded, more more understanding between the community and the school district.
Thank you. Candidate Johnson will answer our next question first. The question is, what particular experiences or skills have prepared you to serve as a board member?
So I have served for the last eight years on the Elkhart Village Library Board, so I think that's probably one of the biggest assets that I could bring to the board. I was president for two terms. I'm very familiar with the process of running a unit of government such as the school board. I think as Sarah pointed out, one of the big, one of the big changes we can make is to board meetings. I think it's a little silly to expect parents to be able to tune in for four plus hours to a board meeting. We can, we can be a little more transparent with what the agenda at these meetings are going to be. We can make some tweaks to the committee meetings, have them be a little bit later, have those also be televised and shared with the community. And I think that will also open the lines of communication to the community and the teachers and everybody who's interested. So I think just a couple of tweaks based on how we run the board. I think that's where I could have a big impact in helping.
Thank you. Candidate Kelly.
Yes, my experience as a parent and as a District 59 staff member helped me to bring perspective to the Board of Education. Having firsthand experience and knowing how things are working inside the school versus what the SLT Board of Education want and think, I would be able to disseminate how changes would be met from staff. I am also very familiar with the certified and classified contract, which can also assist in the decision-making of hiring staff.
Thank you. Candidate Zach.
I spent seven years in the public schools as a teacher, so I know education really well. I've had the experience of doing it. I'm also the only person on the ticket who can say the following three things. I am a community member. I'm a former teacher and I will be a current parent in the fall. And those three facets of my identity will guide all of the decisions that I make on the board. So that is what I think I have to offer and I think I'm uniquely qualified for this position.
Thank you. Candidate Samaji.
Like I said, I lived here since 1967. I raised my three children. They all went to, all went to District 59 schools. As a board member, I was on the board for a number of years. Actually, more year, more than half of my life, I was on the Board of Education. And I served six times as board president. I served as president on Laika, or chairman of Laika of NSSEO. I was on our Association, Illinois Association of School Boards. I was on Board of Directors on that for 20 years. I've served on every single committee I think that the district has had. So I have the experience and I have a knowledge that will bring some stability and some history to the board.
Thank you. Candidate Patrielli.
I've been on the board for four years. I've been a union member. I've been in on contract negotiations for both the teachers and for the ESPs. I've taught in this district for 25 years. I've lived in this district for 35. All four of my children went through here. I've subbed in this district. I, having been in the buildings when I was teaching, I know the unique problems of teachers and students, even the administration. So I believe that makes me very qualified to continue on this journey that still has a great deal of things to be accomplished. I'm not saying that we tackled anything remotely enough to change this district. There's so much more that needs to be done and I hope to be around to do it.
Thank you. Candidate Chesney.
Well, first let me start by saying that I do not believe that there is one profile that is right for to be a member as a candidate, to be a candidate and a member of the board. I do believe that it is the differences of experiences that will help us bring about better district and to help us improve what we have right now. I personally, I am a parent. I can say that I have a stake in the district because my children are, my daughter is in the Du Language at Claremont and my son is part of the Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization. So both of those give me a unique perspective. And I know that anything I do will impact my kids. At the same time, I also have a significant experience from the corporate world by helping and ability to solve problems, run projects and turn around a very difficult situations, which I think is what our district needs right now.
Thank you. That covers everyone, correct? Okay, great. Sorry, sometimes I lose track of that. Our next question is going to be started with candidate Kelly. And the question is, what steps would you take to promote gun violence prevention initiatives in District 59?
Oh, that's a good one because when I was asked to transfer from John Jay over to Claremont, the first thing out of my mouth was that is not a safe, secure school. It did not have a secure entrance. And that was one of the things I asked if we could get taken care of, which they did. It took a while, but I totally understand the process. Sitting in that seat, knowing that so many other people in my position across the country had been the target of someone coming in. It's difficult every day to, even if Mr. Chesney came into school, I did not know the dads as much as I knew the moms. I would ask for identification. I would not let them in the front door. All the doors are locked in District 59. I know that. I feel that it's a safe, secure place. Could it be better? Absolutely. Everyone is vigilant and, you know, having officers at a school building, I'm not quite sure that would be totally necessary.
Thank you. Candidate Zach.
Unfortunately, this is something I thought about a lot when I was a high school teacher. There are school shootings every single year. I think the way that you promote gun violence prevention initiatives is you promote them. You make sure that you stand for things that will help kids and will help promote safety amongst kids. I think that we can do a lot as a district to simply have basic fidelity to disciplinary philosophies that will help the kids get on the right track and have them really got, get taken care of socially and emotionally. That social emotional piece is also so important. And I think that the way you promote that is you promote it and you stand for it. So I promise that I will always vote on the side of safety amongst our students.
Thank you. Candidate Samaji.
Safety is 100% most important thing and for one of the most important things in the building. We have the video. We have the secure entrances now. We have at times discussed officers in the building. However, with four communities, it's very difficult to coordinate that because we're part of Displanes, Mount Prospect, Iron Heights and Elk Grove Village. But I think the officer-friendly type officers in the building would be extremely helpful, even if they are on a rotating basis, especially in the junior highs. If children get to meet an officer and see an officer and know that they're there to protect them, I think it helps to promote a good safety within a building. So with some behavioral issues that are happening in our junior highs, I think that that might be helpful.
Thank you. Candidate Patrielli.
A few years ago, when I first was elected to the board, one of my main goals was to get safety in the schools. And one of those ways that I was thinking was the SROs, the Student Resource Officers. They, I know logistically, because we are part of different communities, it would be difficult. But District 15, District 25, District 54, all have SRO officers. And the safety is not as big of an issue as it is in those schools that don't have something that's there every day that kids can count on, that they can see and that they can talk to and that they can also learn to communicate with and have a respect and a dialogue with them to have somebody in that position around that they can talk to if they have any kind of questions or concerns, as well as parents. And I have done my research. I've done my due diligence. I went to different schools that had the SRO. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm out of time, but had the SROs and actually I saw more positives than there could possibly negatives. So I would like to revisit that. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Chesney.
Thank you so much. This is a wonderful, great question that is very dear to my heart because I do have kids in in school and especially nowadays that my daughter in just a couple of years will be in a middle school because I do believe that that's where. that's where most of the, the, the news that we see is happening, all of the shootings, all of the, the gun violence. And, and definitely safety starts with the secure buildings. I do, I do agree with, with what candidate Kelly and Zach mentioned. And I do definitely agree that we do need to have initiatives, but those initiatives cannot be just in classrooms. They have to be, those, those are things that have to go to the parents. Those are the things that have to go to the community to promote that safety. I mean, it's something that we need to invest in, especially our students, helping our helping our committees, our admins and getting those resource officers in schools, especially when we look at current statistics. Not sure if the board is aware, but right now we have, just last year, we had more than double the amount of callings to the police than previous three years combined because of the safety issues because of a different incidence. And that is, for me, that is extremely alarming, something that we need to do immediately.
Thank you, candidate. All right, we're going to do.
I have, I have to answer still, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I
No problem.
My long-winded way of saying we're going to do that and then we're going to move into closing statements.
Okay, great. So I, I agree with this is Patrielli that we one hundred percent need to look at resource officers. I mean, we don't even have enough teachers that, like Sarah pointed out, we don't even have enough teachers for every classroom on Sundays. So things are going to slip through the cracks. Behavior issues are only becoming more problematic, especially post-COVID. As Lucas pointed out, and it only takes one time to be wrong. And that's something that I won't be willing to compromise on. It's something that I won't be willing to budge on is the safety of the students. Because if you don't feel safe, you're not going to feel comfortable. The teachers aren't going to be able to teach the curriculum. Doesn't matter how good the curriculum is, doesn't matter anything if you're not feeling safe in these schools. So that's the number, one of the number one things for me to accomplish is to make sure that the behaviors are under control. And like Sarah said, people and students and parents are responsible for the behaviors of their children and that we make sure that the schools are safe, secure and never compromise on that.
Thank you so much, candidate Johnson. We're going to move into closing statements now, going in the reverse order that we used for opening statements. So we're going to start with candidate Kelly. You have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for listening. I want to be someone who will listen to all sides and to ask those follow-up questions, no matter what kind of questions they are. I want to listen and I want to represent the community while focusing on the students and staff. And I want to bring back District Fifty Nine to what we were, the golden district that everybody wanted to work for. That's where my heart is. This is my family. And if I could paraphrase one of my old principles, my family is your kids, my kids, our kids, all kids. And that's what District Fifty Nine is to me.
Thank you. Candidate Johnson.
Thank you. So thank you again for hosting the forum. It's been great to hear from all the candidates. We all have similar opinions and similar ways and similar ideas on how to make the district better. So I think the decision that the voters need to make is who they trust to actually implement that change. So these are the same issues that were for here four years ago. Maybe one of the new ones is the elevated behavior problems. So it's time for officials on the board to not only acknowledge the problems, but actually do something about it and, and impact the change that we all know that needs to be made in, in the district and bring it back to, to the great district that we all know it to be. So again, I'll go back to my experience on the Elk Grove Library Board. While we were there, we appointed a new director. We underwent capital improvement. We modernized the, the collection to, to adapt to the changing demands of the public. We navigated the COVID-nineteen pandemic and all that led to the district, or I'm sorry, the library being recognized as the fourth best library of its size in the nation. So I know how to do it. I can do it and I will do it if elected to the board. And so that's the decision that the public needs to make on April fourth and remember early voting starts March twentieth.
Thank you. Candidate Chesney.
Thank you again for the opportunity to be here. I would encourage everyone to vote for the three candidates that have been listening to the community and actively working vocally, working to bring positive changes. And that is candidate Zach Johnson and myself. And up until the election time, basically up until January, no one else was actively involved in trying to help the, the district, the teachers, the kids, the parents. I mean, over the past few years, I mean, we all have been dealing with a lot of critical challenges, including the curriculum changes, the pandemic crisis management, the teacher resource and support management issues and more. However, in my opinion, as well as those of teachers and, and parents that I spoke with, the focus and actions of, of the board of those past four, five, ten years did not address any of those issues. And there have been a number of decisions that really could have been handled a lot better with a greater benefit to the community. Instead of tearing it apart, it could have built our community up and really drive the positive change for, for our students, for our kids. If I am elected, I, I really want the opportunity to hear back from the community and, and the teachers and see what it is that they believe we need to change in the district. And I do believe that through collaboration with, with the board members, with the SLT, with the community, we can do, we do can make a difference in District Fifty Nine and can bring that positive change for, for all of the students. I am here to ask for your vote for myself and, and, and my team. And when elected, I do hope we get the chance to earn it. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Patrielli.
For the past four years and before that, I have been a voice for the teachers. I have had their support and I have supported them because I believe they're a voice that needs to be heard so that they can do the best for the students and for the community as well. I think we need to work on our recruiting, which is something I'd like to get involved in and do something about if I do come back, if I am re-elected. I think working on moving forward on curriculum, getting it to a place where it doesn't take us a thousand years to get it out to the teachers, getting safety into all the schools and building trust and community with not just the parents in the district, but also our taxpayers that have helped to support our schools. Our schools look great. We've done a lot to make them safe environmentally, air quality, all those kind of things, but we need to take care of what's inside those schools and that's the teachers, the students that really need to have a good future. And the best future we can give them is to get them up to speed so that they can be successful in life, which is our motto is supposed to be making them successful for life. Well, they can't do that if they don't feel comfortable, safe or have the tools that they need. I think if we want to bring teachers into this district, we need to show them that we are the district that we were seven, eight years ago when we, before we got the superintendent in that started to take away everything. And we need to put everything back the, the way it was. If it's not broke, don't fix it. If there wasn't anything wrong with the way we did things before, bring it back because that was successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Samaji.
The April election is critical. And I say this because since May two thousand and nineteen, fourteen board members have rotated on and off the seven-member Board of Education. This can be unsettling, leading to the supposition that being a board member is more difficult than expected and it is difficult. I missed the birth of my granddaughter because we were in the midst of, of a superintendent, hiring a new superintendent and, and, and I had an interview that evening, so I didn't get to see her and right away. But for different perspectives, new board members are very integral to the operation and deliberations and working of a Board of Education. I've worked with many different board members, many different personalities and, and those are all important. But it is also important to have stability and history on the board in order to make those sound decisions. When making decisions, it is necessary to learn from the past, review the present best practices and have input from stakeholders to develop a combined vision for the future. Any major decisions, and I, and I do mean, you know, major decisions and even small, some of the smaller decisions like that, that kind of even includes what has been going on those last few years should be made with early notice, open dialogue and debate before an administrative recommendation comes. But most important, it's so important to do what is best for our students, the students of District Fifty Nine and to meet all their needs. So I would appreciate it if you would consider voting for me and putting me back on the board because I am a totally independent candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, candidate Zach. Uh, candidate Zach, I think you're muted.
Did we skip, Mrs. Kelly?
No, I was first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Hi, I'm back. I want to thank first the League of Women Voters. What you do for democracy is so important. Just getting information out to voters is so, so important. And you've learned a lot about all these candidates tonight. To be honest with you voters, I think you've got a wonderful choice. All I see in front of me are people who are kind, who want to keep kids at the center of everything. And I think that everyone has wonderful qualities that would work on the board. As I said before, and not to toot my own horn, I think I'm your best choice. I think I'm the only one who's got those three qualities. I'm a former teacher. I know schools. I'm a community member and I'm a current parent. And that is so important to me, being a current parent, because this is personal to me. And this is something that I have a great passion for. My son cannot redo elementary school. So we've got to right the ship and we've got to write it fast. I think that there are two other candidates here who are also current parents, TR and Lucas. And I think that that is really the only difference that I can see here that's really, really significant. So it's going to come down to that for some of you. I think I've got a great passion for this job. I've got a great passion for education and I hope that you will remember me on April fourth. If you want to know more about me, TR, Lucas, please visit sosfivenine.org. You can get information about us as candidates. And I really thank you for attending tonight and I really just want the best for our district. And I see a whole bunch of people in front of me who also want the best for our district. So I want to thank you all for your service and for volunteering to do this crazy thing again. And truly, I wish the best for all of you and the best of luck and I want the best for our district and I know we all do.
Thank you so much. Thank you to our candidates and our audience for listening today and hopefully gaining a little bit of insight through our forum. I'm going to pass back to our MC now for some closing remarks about the league that we hope you stick around to listen to.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lucy Nacy, for being our fabulous moderator and leading the forum in the wonderful way that you did. Please make sure to register to vote. First and foremost, please register, make your plan to vote and then make sure your voice is counted this election day, April fourth. Need help? League of Women Voters Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, Buffalo Grove is here to help. Check out our website at www.lwva.org for voter registration information. Yes, you can register online, mail-in vote information, secure dropbox locations, planning your ballot ahead of time for ease, as well as your early and day of polling locations. Are any of you looking to support this year's election to make sure it's safe, secure and accessible for all? We even have a link where you can sign up to be a poll worker and earn a little extra cash. Again, check us out, www.lwva.org and follow us on social media at Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. We have accounts specifically for youth at student.lwva and a mascot at pause for the number four votes. And make sure, once you're ready to vote, you tell ten friends where they can find all the information they need to be counted. We are grateful to you all for joining us and to our candidates, TR Johnson, Sarah Zach, Patricia Patrielli, Lucas Chesney, Rose Kelly and Barbara Schnazny. Democracy relies on citizens willing to run for office. Special thank you to our ASL interpreter Stacy Shine Stapleton. And a big thank you and shout out to the Elk Grove Village Public Library for hosting this forum, an award-winning public library, with a special thank you to Lizzie Klinger and to all of the volunteers of our league who worked tirelessly as volunteers to bring you this free program open to the public. The recording of this forum will be available on both the LWVA YouTube channel and the Elk Grove Village Public Library YouTube channel. Have a great night. Maybe we'll see you back here for the other candidate forums we will be hosting for the April fourth election. Check our website for registration links to other forums. Be well.